Okay, good morning everyone and welcome to the Special Meeting of Council, the 17th of March, St Patrick's Day, I won't do a bad Irish accent for 2021. Welcome to the Special Meeting of Toowoomba Regional Council. This meeting is open to the public and will also be livestreamed. I would like to thank all of you in the room today and acknowledge everyone who's watching via council social media channels. I'd like to start the meeting by acknowledging the Portfolio Leader, Councillor Carl, councillors, the Chief Executive Officer, the General Manager of Planning and Development Group. I acknowledge the Aboriginal parties whose songlines traverse these lands we meet on today, the Western Waka Waka, Geibl and Jarrawa peoples, and pay respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, for they hold the knowledge, rich traditions and bold ambitions of Australia's first peoples. We have an apology for this morning from Councillor Antonio. Can I have someone move that we accept his apology? Councillor McDonald, Councillor Melissa Taylor, all those in favour? Thank you. I've just had word that Councillor O'Shea is running late, so he should be here in a minute. There's no leave of absences and we don't need to grant any leave of absences. So can I please have someone move? We have suspension of standing orders, Councillor Von Hoff and Councillor Carol Taylor, all those in favour? Okay, so, thank you. We move to item number four, which is reconfiguring a lot code, reconfigure one lot into two lots at 27 Donnelly Street, Oki. And I will just tell you councillors, the reason why this has come to council, to a special meeting is because it's in the PFAS mapping zone and the recommendation from governance has been that these will now, or any applications like this will now come to a special meeting. So, thank you. And we have Shaquita, who's going to take us through it, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning councillors, ladies and gentlemen. This report outlines an assessment of code assessable development application for reconfiguring one lot into two lots at 27 Donnelly Street. Please can we open, Wendy please, can we open attachment two? Thank you. So, the subject land is located north of Oki Koya Road. The site has an area of 2,036 square metres and have two frontages to Donnelly Street and Davidson Street. So, the subject site is outlined in red. As you can see on the aerial view, the site contains abandoned horse stables and abandoned structure for groundwater bore to south-west of the horse stable here. Some stockpiles of concrete fragments to the north of horse stable and soil stockpiles. So, the zoning map shows that the subject site and adjoining premises are located in general precinct of the low-density residential zone. The subject site is located 300 metres from Oki, from Oki Creek and 1,000 metres from Army Aviation Centre in Oki. It is known that the land there is contaminated with polyfluoroalkyl substances, or PFAS in short, and the subject site is located in PFAS Management Zone One, that has certain activity restrictions related to the use of the groundwater and homegrown produce, vegetable and animal produce, livestock produce. The proposed development involves subdivision of one lot into two lots and creates two lots, Lot 62, with 921 square metres and Lot 61 with 1,115 square metres. Both lots can be serviced, Lot 61 can be serviced from Donnelly Street and Lot 62 can be serviced from Davidson Street and can have access to all urban infrastructure. So, as I said, the subject site is located in PFAS Management Zone One and the proposed development was assessed against the relevant performance outcome of the reconfiguring a lot code that states that reconfiguration avoids risk to human safety and the environment from natural hazards and contaminated land. The applicant provided preliminary site investigation report. Wendy, can we open, I think it's attachment four, please? Four, yes, attachment four, sorry. So, the report states that the limited and preliminary field investigation undertaken found that PFAS contaminants in the soil were below applicable human health and ecological screening criteria, and that the site is unlikely to present an acceptable risk to sensitive receptors with implementation of the recommendations. The report includes a recommendation that remaining abandoned bore infrastructure is Council obtained peer review of that preliminary site investigation report that concludes that the proposed development poses a low and acceptable risk to human health and the environment in relation to PFAS exposure and that preliminary site investigation demonstrates that the development, the proposed development adequately complies with the performance outcome of the reconfiguring a lot. The peer review report in summary recommends decommissioning of the existing groundwater bore and the applicant should follow recommendations detailed in preliminary site investigation report regarding the Queensland Health Recommendations for Residential Properties Located Within PFAS Management Zone One to Minimize Potential Exposure to PFAS-Impacted Media and Notification of an Appropriate Qualified Environmental Consultant to Determine Appropriate Remediation or Management Actions If During Earthworks or Excavation Visual or Oil Factory Evidence of Contamination Is Encountered. Based on the recommendations of both reports, it is considered that the proposed development can comply with performance outcome of the reconfiguring a lot with the imposition of reasonable and relevant conditions, in particular recommended conditions related to requirement to decommission the groundwater bore and to prevention of releases of PFAS contamination to ground, surface water or groundwater during the site works and throughout the life of the development. In addition, it is recommended to include advice notes relating to works and activity in PFAS Management Zone. Such it is considered that the proposed development generally complies with the assessment benchmarks, or it can be conditioned to comply, and it is recommended the proposed development be approved, subject to reasonable and relevant conditions.
Thank you Shaquita. Councillors, are there any questions for the officer? Councillor Carl?
Yeah, thank you Chair, through to you Shaquita, the conditions, 1112 under development constraints. First question in relation to point 11, I take that would be prior to any site works happening, that bore would need a suitable written confirmation from the driller or the Department of Resources that that bore has been decommissioned, capped prior to any activity, construction on the site?
Yes, that's right, yes.
And then, why do we have condition 12 in there, prior to installing any new replacement of existing groundwater bore? If we're telling them to cap the bore and it's in the PFAS zone?
Yes, because we-
Why is that condition permitting future possibility of putting a bore down?
So, under the Planning Act, we can't restrict them to installing another bore. Under the Work Act, they have lawful right to install portable. However, putting this condition in, we are providing the restrictions that the future, any future installation would require them to have expert advice.
Yeah, it seems a bit of a, dare I say oxymoron. The, just out of curiosity, how does one visually see PFAS contamination in the soil or smell it as per the olfactory senses?
That's a good question. Can I refer this question to our senior environmental officer, please?
Morning councillors, thank you. You can't see it, you'll have to do laboratory analysis to determine whether there are levels. So, the preliminary site investigation report did summarise all of the previous work done by the Australian Defence Department around Oki. They summarised the number of soil samples, groundwater samples, the risks undertaken. They completed two site samples, following Australian standards for how many samples you do need to take, they did their quality assurance, those samples came back as below limits of reporting. You have to take surface soil samples to determine whether or not there is PFAS within the soil.
So, that was, there were two samples on this site?
On this site, yes.
But just if I could pull you up there Luke, because I think what Councillor Carr's referring to in the report, it says if during any earthworks or excavation, offensive or noxious odours and/or evidence of contamination not previously detected are observed, so-
Doesn't make sense.
It is a bit of a standard thing for contamination, to include that, it is one visual way to generically do it. Is it completely related to PFAS? No, it's not.
Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and following up on that, should it be? Why would we put a condition in there that doesn't cover the very thing we're trying to deal with here, in that a standard condition, if it doesn't, if it's not relevant, why would we put a standard condition in there and not make something more relevant, as far as that's concerned?
Which condition are we talking about?
It's on page 23 of 225, so it's one of the dot points. The report provides the following recommendations.
It is in advice notes.
Yes.
No, I know, but I'm sorry, I didn't put that the way I meant to. Because it's in advice note, shouldn't we construct a condition that captures that?
It depends what's in our power to actually write up.
I agree, and through you, that's perhaps what I'm meaning to ask, why haven't we made it a meaningful condition?
So, we believe that we've covered that off by the imposition of conditions 10 to 12, which Councillor Carl mentioned, as well as conditions 16 and 17, which talk about the removal of any surface material and/or reasonable and feasible avoidance and mitigation measures must be employed such that PFAS contamination does not pose a risk to ongoing human health. That's part of our works conditions, so if they do any site works on there, they are obliged to make sure they don't remove any contaminated material off to a different site or expose that, that would then pose a risk to human health. We have a report that's showing that the samples that were taken on that site are that PFAS in the soil itself is very low and presents a low risk to human health. The samples themselves, when you look at the samples, there's a limit of reporting that the sample analysis itself has to meet before the laboratory can actually detect it, and because there's different suites of PFAS itself, only one of the four suites per sample actually provided a sample level above what they could physically detect. Point being, it's a very, very low level of PFAS within the soils on this site.
Madam Chair, can I have a follow-up there? So, in light of what we had in before, with what we've, with information we've had in this before, I understand all that, and the jury's still out on PFAS and the other, but as we know, there's a tremendous amount of community concern, anxiety and hysteria, if you like, around this, and I suppose what I'm asking is that we, should we approve this application and then later on get caught up in some type of an action? Because, because it's perceived that whatever has happened or whatever, you know, people, as we've seen, are very concerned about this and as it plays out, people have claimed, I suppose, illness and other things, and I'm concerned that council may, down the track, or future council may get caught up in some type of an action, not necessarily because it's harmful, but because it's there and it can be proven it's there, I suppose.
I'll just get Danielle to make a comment on that, thanks.
Convoluted question, but, you know.
I think we're falling into the basket of nobody really knows what's out there and what the consequences are.
And as we all know, even worldwide, there has been no, there's no real, I suppose, identification of harm. There's all sorts of allegations, but not at this point.
Councillors, in looking at the issue of PFAS, I guess as a local authority, all we can do at this point in time in exercising a duty of care to, you know, ensure that we've done everything that we can and we've conducted or requested the appropriate investigations to show, I guess to our satisfaction, that this issue can be managed at this point of time. So, in exercising that duty of care, we have sought advice from the applicant, we've got expert advice, which, you know, is a peer review of that, and that expert advice has come back and indicated that there is a very, I guess, low risk, and on that basis, that this development can be approved. So, I guess all that we can say as officers is that we believe as far as we can in exercising a duty of care around looking at this development approval, we've sought the right advice, we've had it peer reviewed, they've come back and given us advice and recommendations, and that's, I guess, what we're recommending in this report. So, as I said, as far as, as far as we can say, we believe we've, I guess, discharged our duty of care in undertaking the appropriate investigations, and that's all we can do at this point in time. We can't predict, you know, what may change in 20 years, all we can do is analyse it based on the information and advice we have at this point in time, and that's what we believe that we've done.
Thank you Danielle, and it's great to see some development in Oki, I mean, to balance that out, but it's just those concerns, thank you.
Councillor Summerfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under our planning scheme, I believe this is a great example, how development can continue to occur in Oki, and I think it's, it's, it's good that this example is before us today, because it highlights these opportunities moving forward for Oki. I have a couple of questions. One is one lot into two, and it's in residential area, but is, is it definitely going to be residential, is my first question?
Well, according to our planning scheme, in low-density residential, certain type of development, that accepted development, for example, a dwelling house or dual occupancy, all other uses are either code assessable or impact assessable, and would require the application, Councillor.
So, they'd have to come back to us?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, just in relation to the street trees, which have to be, have to have the potential to grow to eight metres tall, are there power lines on either of those streets, Davidson or Donnelly?
I can't remember.
I just think that's something that should be considered when we're doing this, because we see some very interesting trees in Toowoomba around power lines, and I just thought, well, eight metres, are you better off having something shorter if you've got power lines, rather than commit to eight metres if there are power lines?
Yes, the condition says unless otherwise agreed by council, so prior to actually planting the trees, the applicant will communicate with Parks and Recreation and submit the landscape plan.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councillor Carl?
Yeah, look, I agree, a positive example of how we might progress cautiously with development, making sure that one, community is protected, two, future councils are as best we can, as per Danielle's advice to us. But I'd also note an attachment to the deafening silence from SARAH, the state agency, in our referral. They mention a lot of things, but nothing about PFAS. I, it would be great for the state and other such agencies that have a state responsibility around this, I note the defence and their comments of public around elevated risk to the community. So, you know, it, I hope that at some point in time, that from local governments at least, combined front, continue to advocate on behalf of their communities and the wellbeing well into the future, as information no doubt will unfold around PFAS, as it has with any other, many other contaminants in our environment, like glyphosate roundup, that we didn't think was harmful to us. I'm not suggesting this is, but I'm suggesting that I hope local government combined, we continue to advocate for our communities. And it's disappointing when you send it to a state agency and they refer about lots of other things, yes, within their jurisdiction, but I think it's high time that they took the reins in hand and showed some leadership from other levels of government around this collective.
Yeah, the referral was triggered because the subject site is located within 25 metres of Oki Koya Road, it's a state-controlled road, and all they assessed is the access from Oki Koya Road to Davidson and Donnelly Street.
Thank you Shaquita. Councillor Shine, did you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. Just looking at the overhead photos, I take it that without the PFAS issue, there would be no, no difficulty in acceding to this request to reconfigure it from one to two lots, because all of the other lots in facing Donnelly or Davidson Street are two lots anyway, aren't they already?
Yes.
Bearing in mind your conclusion, having got the results of all of the tests, et cetera, would, if for example, hypothetically, the owners of the what appears to be vacant lots, not next door, but the one up on the left, looking at the photo of 99225, 99?
Is that to the west or?
I don't, that's, is that the right one?
Oh, you mean to the north?
Yeah, to, as we see it there, to your left, there seems to be a vacant lot there with trees in it. Is that 99?
Oh, it's, it's-
Wendy?
It's a bit of that, I mean.
Is that that line, or to the north or to the east of the subject?
Page 99. I can't tell from here.
It's this one, maybe. Hmm.
I think it's an old shot. You, you don't have the-
Just big blocks, I think, with-
Yeah, I think, Madam Chair, I think the councillor Shine might be looking at one from 1991.
Oh, okay.
And this is, this is a current, so this would be the current, that's what's there now. Yeah, so it's just, these are historic.
An old photo, right.
Oh, was it? Oh, I see, so things might have changed at that time. I suppose, my question though is that with respect to any hypothetical application of a similar nature in that area, would, would applicants have to go through the same regime? Or would you take the results of this as being sufficient to satisfy the requirements with respect to PFAS? If there were separate applications requiring town planning approval in the nearby?
The question that you're asking, if we get another one very similar to this, is it going to come back to council?
Well, not so much, would people be put to the expense, one assumes, of going through, providing all the tests and examinations, or could they rely on these tests to save that expense?
Unfortunately, councillor, we, we would require them to, I guess, undertake the same exercise in relation to the respective lot that we were looking at, because the testing is specific to this particular lot and is looking at, you know, what's in the surface of this lot, so an alternative, different lot may have different concentrations of PFAS, so unfortunately, we would need to require them to undertake their own investigations for us to then, I guess, be satisfied that it was appropriate to recommend approval of development on a different lot. So, they'd have to be-
So, that generally applied to all of land at Oki, that any change of use application would require-
Yes.
-to be done?
Yes.
I'll just get the General Manager to make a comment, thank you.
And regardless, it's code assessment, anyway, so RAL in this situation is code assessable.
Yeah.
Under the scheme as it stands at the moment, the extra icing on the cake for areas in the PFAS is that, under advice, we're bringing it to council to make a decision, despite the fact that it's a code assessable application.
Yep.
And it would normally be dealt with under delegation.
That's right.
And I think your question's going to the heart of, is this sufficient to say that similar applications could be dealt with under delegation, rather than bring it to council?
Yeah.
But the advice we have is that it should come to council.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about unnecessary expense, but you weigh that up.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you. Councillor McMahon?
Well, thanks Chair. My question concerns, we've talked about the PFAS, I just wanted to talk about the flood mapping and this property 300 metres from Oki Creek. I'm reading in the report that our only concern needs to be the type of dwelling and the floor height, et cetera. I'm just wondering if we need to, in our deliberations today, flood, flood mapping and its overlay on our flood mapping scheme needs to be considered to a greater detail, or you're happy with that?
The application was lodged under the version 23 of the Toowoomba Regional Planning Scheme, and at that time, the subject site was on subject to overlay, a flood hazard overlay, so we didn't actually assess it against the flood hazard overlay code. so we didn't actually assess it against the flood hazard overlay code. That was adopted only with the version 24 of the planning scheme. The flood hazard overlay of that subject site was adopted only with latest version of the planning scheme. No, we don't have a condition for that.
So, I mean, should it be assessed against the current version?
We can't assess it against the current version, because it's a code assessable, bounded by the codes that are applicable to that particular application. And because it was lodged under version 23 of the planning scheme, we had to assess only against the applicable codes at that time.
Okay. No, thanks for that answer. I was a bit of concern.
With the concern regarding the floodwaters, I can say that the PFAS is a highly soluble, water soluble substance, and the contamination happens from top to down, so it doesn't happen from groundwater up. So this is why-
PFAS aside, though, just Oki Creek overflows in a Q50 or Q100 event, I note concern that it hasn't been assessed into the newest flood benchmark studies that are in the latest level of the planning scheme.
I can probably ask senior environmental planner to elaborate further, maybe.
Shakida, I might make a comment. I think it's a very good question you're asking. In terms of bounded code assessment, which we are faced with, we can only really apply the assessment in the scheme as it stands. However, we are in the knowledge that it may be affected by floodwaters, so what we would do, I'm sure, is in the covering letter that accompanies this, assuming it is approved, that the approval would go out with a covering letter indicating that they would need to check on the flood levels before establishing the height of the floor. That would be normal.
So this cover letter conditions concerning flooding and-
It wouldn't be a condition, it would be advice only.
Advice, they're really, they're going to sell these off to probably private buyers who buy them, and that's their responsibility to take on these conditions.
That's right.
Councillors, I can't say for certain in terms of this property, because I haven't got the flood mapping, but if it is affected by the current overlay mapping, it may actually trigger a referral at the building work stage, so if someone wants to build a house, it may actually trigger a referral on the basis that it's flood-affected, but I haven't seen the flood mapping for this particular site, but there is a trigger if it is flood-affected for there to be a referral and an assessment of that risk.
So can I have a follow-up, Chair? Sorry. So we get someone with a first homeowners grant, young, inexperienced, I suppose this is why you spend the money doing the searches-
Yep.
-so that you know what you're buying, and you know that you're going to have to fork out X amount more because, you know, a flood zone that isn't previously picked up anywhere.
councillor Carl?
Further to councillor McMahon's good question, I think it would be really wise for us to include a cover letter, as you suggest, Mr GM. That is a further level of assurance that we have made the buyer beware and subsequent potential conditions around building. That way we avoid the compensation discussion in the boardroom later on, when someone says they weren't told. And that's our responsibility now, and I think that's a good, two levels, transparent levels of allowing the potential client or end client of that piece of land to be made aware of. Yeah.
Okay. Are there any further questions or comments? We have no one here to speak to us today, so if that's the case, can I have someone move that we reinstate standing orders? councillor Melissa Taylor, councillor McDonald, all those in favour? Okay, so the recommendation is that council approve application number RAL 20202390 for a development permit for reconfiguring a lot code, reconfigure one lot into two pursuant to the provisions of section 60 of the Planning Act 2016 and subject to the conditions listed below. Can I have someone move that recommendation?
Can I ask a question, Chair? Sorry, before we do that, Stuart, you're happy to put those advice in the letter, it doesn't need to be part of the motion? Thank you.
So with that, did I get a mover then for this? councillor McDonald? councillor Melissa Taylor-Secondes? All those in favour? It's carried unanimously. Thank you. Now, before I conclude the meeting, we're just, if I could, just go back to item number two, which is the request for leave of absence. councillor McMahon?
Yeah, thanks, Chair, and my apologies for, oh, we skipped over it pretty quick, but just to inform the chamber, I need to request a leave of absence from the DAT meeting scheduled for 31st of March 2021. That's in two weeks' time.
Very good. Can I have someone move to accept that? councillor Von Hoff and councillor Carl, all those in favour? Thank you. So the meeting's closed at 9:37. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.